All right, it's about 7:04 on Tuesday, February 27th, 2018. I'm going to call the Friendswood Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting into order. We have on the agenda tonight, looks like, three requests for variances or special exceptions. All right, first I'd like to take a minute and explain the procedure to those of you who are not regulars at the meeting, so everybody will understand what's going on, and particularly the applicants will understand the process. First, for each application, we'll have a representative of the city will speak to us and explain the history of the request and why it was originally denied. Then the petitioner or the petitioner's representative can take the podium and tell us why they think they -- we should approve their request. And then we will have public comments, anyone from the public who wishes to take a moment to speak either for or against the proposal may do so. After the public comments are made, we will close the public portion, public input portion of the meeting, and only the board members will have the opportunity at that time to deliberate or ask further questions of any of the witnesses. By Texas law, a supermajority vote is required to approve the application, and that means you need four out of five votes, not just a majority of three, in order for the application to pass. If less than four people vote to approve the application, then it will be denied. If the application is denied and you wish to appeal that, the only way to file the appeal is with the county court of the county in which the property is located. There's a short deadline for the appeal, there are some technicalities to it, so you may wish to consult a lawyer if you want to consider appealing our decision. This is a quasi judicial proceeding, that means we are acting pretty much as a court would, and because of that, we will ask that the witnesses that speak tonight will be sworn in to give truthful testimony, the same swearing in that you would normally expect to receive in court. So I'll ask you now, if you intend to speak to the board tonight, would you please stand and raise your right hand for your oath, either as a member of the public or presenting your proposals? None of the other people back there intend to speak? You don't have to come speak if you are sworn in, you can change your mind later. All right. All right, do each of you solemnly swear our firm to tell the truth and the whole truth in your testimony before the board this evening? Thank you, you may be seated. All right, the first application is a request for a variance to encroach five feet onto the required 30-feet front yard setback on the property of 406 Independent Drive in Heritage Estates. Can we have a member of staff give the presentation on that, please? Oh, and one more thing I forgot to tell you all, if you are speaking, please come to a microphone. The staff member has his own, but everyone else will ask you to come to the podium over here to speak for two reasons, number one, so that we can hear you, and number two, the meeting is recorded. You may notice the gentleman in the back corner, he is recording this, and the city saves this or even available on YouTube if you want to see them. But, so we'll ask that you speak from the microphone. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, I'm Brian Rowan, chief building official, City of Friendswood. The applicant is proposing the demolition of their current home to build an elevated home on the existing foundation. The addition of the front entry stairs would encroach the required front yard setback by six feet, eight inches. The city's minimum build line is 25 feet, but when the subdivision was created in 1973, the developer wanted a little larger lot, so they did a 30-foot front build line. So once they submitted their site plan, the site plan had initial denial based on this encroachment.
So is that the encroachment on the 25-foot or the 30-foot?
On the 30-foot.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, can we have the applicant then make their presentation?
Good evening, I'm Larry Music, this is my wife Donna, and what we're asking for tonight is the stairs in front of the home, I don't know, I gave the city the plans, do you guys have them?
We have copies, yes.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure. What we have existing, we've been in the home since 1987, excuse me, it was built in The slab that it is sitting on now has got a lot of structural problems, and we're, we have got, I guess you would say, they're, the piers, not piers, they're pollings that are underneath the slab in about 37 or 38 places now, driven into the ground underneath the existing slab. So we're building the new home, we're taking the existing home off and the slab away, and we're building a new slab on top of the existing pollins, or, I was probably saying this wrong, the piers underneath the slab now. So we wanted to use those existing, so we brought the house all the way to the front. Also, if we back the house up...
It's at the 30-foot build line.
Like the previous house was. The, if we back up the new home, we've got to take out more trees, and as you know, Heritage is, the state where we're at is a lot of beautiful trees, so we don't want to continue cutting down trees to put in a home. And we're asking for the stairs in front of the home in the encroachment area. The house actually sits back, as you can see, the house actually sits back about 38 feet from the curb already, because we have a 16-foot, 16-6 variance in front of that, plus then we have the 30-foot, so it's like, almost, for, excuse me, 48 feet back from the curb now. So we're just asking for the stairs, is all we're asking for in front of the house.
Do you have anything you want to add, ma'am?
I was just going to say that we, in tearing down the home and rebuilding, we realized that we have to go two and a half feet above, but me, having been through Harvey, said four and a half feet, I don't want to do this ever again, I don't want anybody else to go through this again.
If we go four and a half feet and we flood, look out for...
So that's why the stairs have to be there in order for us to get into the home. But yes, the encroachment is only for the stairs because the house will be sitting on the 30-foot build line.
My neighbors that received a letter are all here tonight, if you would like to ask them questions, feel free, please, you know, they're paid very well to be here, so, just kidding.
We always, we always like to hear from neighbors, and hopefully they'll speak.
Exactly, but, I mean, we've all lived around there, we don't want to move, that's why we're rebuilding. I mean, we've had opportunity, we could have moved, I mean, our kids grew up here, went to Friendswood, all the way through high school, I mean, all the way through kindergarten through high school. Donna teaches in the district, I retired from Ellington Field, we don't want to remove, we want to stay, so we were rebuilding in our area, and they're encouraged by it, and they're not going to be probably happy that the taxes will go up, but, but they're encouraged about the new home.
Thank you, Mr. Music. Are there any of those neighbors who would like to have a comment about this application?
Hi there, my name's Jill Groschell, we live on Pilgrim Lane, so the second house in, and we totally understand what they've gone through, and I believe if you look around the neighborhood, other homes in the neighborhood already have been given a variance for stairs that go past the 30-foot line, so there's already been a precedent for it. And like them, you know, we all want to stay, and we want them to stay and be able to get what they want, I mean, we've all been through so much, and so I totally support them, my husband and I support them, and really hope that you guys will give them what they want so that they can, they can live in their home.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Mike Menon, I live on the corner of Independence and Pilgrim, across the street on Independence from them. Like everybody knows, everybody's gone through a lot, and we're just waiting for everybody that can, we're rebuilding now, but we're waiting for everybody to get back in so we can be our local community again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Morgan Hill, I'm a neighbor also, I'm Catty Corner, I'm going to be doing, planning to do the same thing, tear down and raise up four and a half feet. I think one thing that Larry told me that I'd like to add, I believe there's a considerable amount of cost involved in moving his house because of the piling issue, and so he's, he's almost kind of, in order to move it back just a little bit, he's got interference with those existing, existing pilings, so I think that's something else to be considered, other than the fact that we, we want him to have his house the way it is, and I don't, I don't see how, moving through the neighborhood, that you'd be able to tell, one way or another, where the stairs were. I mean, I think it's going to be insignificant as far as the view of the neighborhood, so...
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this proposal? Last chance, anyone else out there? All right, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting then, and turn it over to the, to the board for deliberations, they may have questions, some of you, if you do, if they do ask you a question, please return to the podium so we can get it recorded.
Just one simple question, and I'm not sure who I'd direct it to, because I'm sure you had the plans. You say you're going to build back on top of the piers, is this going to be essentially the same footprint? It is?
As I understand it, this is just a, the need has arisen because of the house being built a little higher, and the higher the house is, further the stairs have to go out to reach the ground. All right. Anyone else have any questions or comments on the board? Do I have a motion?
A motion to grant the...
I'll second it.
Just as a reminder to everyone, to approve a variance, the prerequisites that we need to find are that the grant of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, there are no special conditions peculiar to the property, or there, excuse me, there are special conditions peculiar to the property involved, the literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship for the property owner, different from his neighbors or other properties, the grant of the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, and the grant of the variance will ensure that substantial justice will be done. So I'll assume then that our motion is to find these prerequisites and to approve the motion. And with all in favor, please raise your right hand. The vote is unanimous, the application is approved. Thank you, sir. You are free to leave if you want to.
27. One more day and it's over, move on to the next month.
All right, the next item on the agenda, item number three, board will consider an application recording, for a request for variance to encroach nine feet onto the required 25-foot front yard on the property of 505 Brandywine Drive. You going to get that door, Mr. Hill? Thank you. All right, do we, all right, we'll hear from the city then on the application? Go ahead, sir.
The applicant is requesting a variance to be allowed to keep a carport that encroaches the front 25-foot build, building setback by nine feet. This same applicant presented this request to the board back in November of 2015. The, a copy of the 2015 application is included for backup material, briefly, to remind you, this was the one that the building department did do a stop work order because they were exceeding the permit and the structure did not comply with at that point. There was an existing metal carport in place when the current owner purchased the property. Based on the statements made in her application, it appears that the applicant is contending that the existing carport was improved. That existing carport was a non-conforming structure, and the improvements made did not enlarge or alter the carport in any manner, which increases the nonconformity. The carport did not undergo ordinary repairs, but was replaced entirely, including the structure supports, replacing the roof from a flat roof to a pitched roof, it also increased the structure height and cubic content. As you can see by the pictures, there has been significant change to the originally
Is that it? All right. Okay, this is obviously an unusual situation, but I believe this has already been posted, published, and I think we have the obligation to proceed, so, do I, do I hear a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All right, go ahead, I'll close the presentation and public. We do have a public comment, okay, I think this is a first, no, no presentation but a comment. You're welcome, sir, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Carrie Haskell, I live right across the street at 506 Brandywine Drive, and I'm speaking for the, I hope you approve the variance. I've lived there, we've lived there since 1982, the previous owner, one of the previous owners that put up the first carport, John Robinson, we were both board members on the HOA in the early 90s, and the structure was given a variance at that point, and it was in compliance with that variance at that time. The new structure was built, and I watched, you know, all the construction going on, and it was built in the same dimensions as the previous carport, in the exception of the height to the roof. And this is definitely an improvement in our neighborhood, I walk out of my house every day and I see it, it's, it's finished now, it doesn't look like that, it has paneling and, you know, it has a very appealing finish to it, so it is an improvement to our neighborhood. And it was, is my hope that you consider that, that it was given a variance previously in the 90s, it was voted by the board at that time in the 90s, because I was sitting in the chairs here and was witness to that, and it is a significant improvement in our neighborhood. I would hope that all the people in the neighborhood that had a carport like the exist, the previous one, could change over to one like this, so we could continue to have improvement in our neighborhood. Thank you.
If you'll stay close to the microphone, I think we, you may have a question or two, since you were witness to the history of this thing.
Certainly.
Did you have another comment to make, Brian?
Yeah, I've got the minutes for two previous ZBOAs, one in October of 1993 where this variance was denied, and then again in May of 1995 where it was denied again.
I had a question about that, first, first of all, it was non-conforming, does that mean it was non-conforming when the, was it already in existence before the, the ordinance applied to the property, or did it become non-conforming after that point, is one question I had?
I can't explain why it existed in a, after October of 1993, it, it just, I don't know if it was just unenforced.
I know we have some areas that were, that were annexed after they were built, and then we have others, you know, and they were already non-conforming when they were brought in, and obviously couldn't do anything about that.
Looking at the notes, it looked like this was an unpermitted structure in 1993, and went through the same process of what we're going through now, just 25 years later, where it was an...
Did you see...
...unpermitted structure that was noncompliant.
Did you see any significant differences between the previous request and this one?
Other than the applicant's and probably size of it, there is not much difference, it seems to be the same situation, just repeating itself.
I had a question, the, in 2015, it was denied, and the construction had already taken place essentially.
Without a permit.
Without a permit. I remember the builder, because I happened to have been on the board at that time, and for some reason, the builder didn't get a permit, and, and they, and they put a stop when they found that it was over the setback, and then the variance, the application for variance was denied here. And the only remedy at that point, as I understand, is with the county court, and I guess that's Galveston. Do you know if they sought that remedy?
They did not seek an appeal.
What was the city's position then after that?
We have issued multiple citations on this property for its noncompliance.
So it's been issued citations since 2015?
Yes, sir. 2016, January 28th.
Well, beginning with whatever.
Correct. We gave them 60 days, it appears, after the...
Yeah, they, we, yes, Frank generally gave, yes, yes.
So after the, the period, we started issuing citations.
The construction was not completed when the denial for the variance was issued, so they obviously completed the construction.
They did, without any inspections, correct.
Was the, we've seen pictures of two different structures, obviously this one is, is much more attractive and larger, but was the older one ever removed, prior to just tearing it down for the construction?
No, sir, it was, it remained in its state until they, they started demoing under a demo permit, and once they started reestablishing it, that's when the stop work order was issued, then they pursued a permit...
When approximately was that, if you remember?
March of, or 20, March of 2015.
And has, and it, and there's been a consideration with this board after that?
Correct, so then that started the process on the October, or November 17th, ZBOA of 2015.
Okay. Anyone else? I was just trying to understand, to get a timeline, and, and what the city's response was to the denial here, if they didn't seek out a remedy in Galveston Courts, what happened between now and that variance? I mean...
A substantial number of citations.
Wow, okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone, anyone else? Okay, I'm sorry, sir, it looks like we don't have a question, I think our city official was able to clear it up.
Can I add, just add one thing?
Sure.
John Robinson, when they built out, the first time he built out the carport, it was my understanding that it was built out too far, and then we had to cut it back.
Right.
And so I actually helped him cut it back to meet the, what was compliance, we were told at that time.
Has this been the same property owner for the last several years, or is there someone who moved?
No, John, John moved away, and then he passed away.
Okay.
So that was 2000, I, I don't know, a...
Long time, more than 10 years ago.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do however recognize this name is, is the same name as, yeah, or the last request, certainly.
This is the same applicant as 2015.
All right, hear a motion then?
A motion to approve.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, this application for variance fails, 5 to 0. Does anyone need any additional information or questions before we move to the vote on the special exception?
Just to put off the record, would you go ahead and do the vote?
Sure. All right. Number four on our agenda tonight is for the board to consider a public hearing, to conduct a public hearing and consider a request for a special exception to encroach nine feet into the required 25-foot front yard on the property located at 505 Brandywine Drive in Analia, Kings Park, in Gaucon County, Friendswood. Again... Okay, all right, all right, and the, the request in order, oh, that's special exception. Again, our prerequisites to approve a request for a variance are that the grant of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, there are special conditions peculiar to the property involved, the literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in an unnecessary hardship for the property owner, different from his neighbors or other similar properties, the grant of the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, and the grant of the variance will ensure that substantial justice has been done. All right. Again, I believe I heard a motion for purposes of the vote, a motion to approve, and a second? Correct? Give you a second? All right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, again, there are no votes for, it's 5-0 against, so the variance is not approved. We'll move on to item four on our agenda, to consider a request for the special exception to the same property. Does anyone want to... Does anyone want to hear? Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we just go ahead and hear from the staff, just to make a record here, since they're not here? Sir, would you just briefly run through again why the city does not think a special exception should be granted?
So the applicant is alternately requesting a permanent de minimis special exception to allow the carport to remain. The posts of the structure encroach the required twenty-five-foot front building line by nine feet, being a thirty-six percent encroachment. De minimis exception, the board may grant a special exception for very small exceptions to the zoning ordinance.
And you obviously do not believe this is a de minimis, de minimis exception.
I, I do not feel that meets the definition.
Approximately one-third, I understand. All right. Anyone have any comments or questions?
I, again, I would have to agree with them. Certainly, I don't see when you're over a third that it's de minimis.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, do I hear a motion then?
A motion to approve a request for a special exception.
Okay. And I'll construe that motion to, be a motion to find the five prerequisites that are needed and to approve the special exception. All in favor, please raise your right hand. There are no four, no votes for, so the, the request fails five to zero. I notice on the, the request that the applicant made, even though it's not on our agenda, there was a request made for an appeal on this same property. It's not clear exactly what the property owner, what decision is being appealed, but again, is there anyone that wants to make a presentation for this to explain what decision of the city official that is being appealed? Again, there's no one here for that, so just to close it up, I think we should go ahead and take a vote on this. And again, to remind everyone, an appeal is to appeal a decision that a city official made that might be just factually wrong. For instance, you measured it and found it to be a nine-foot setback when actually it was only a nine-inch setback, or something along those lines. So with that in mind, do I hear a motion regarding an appeal on this property?
Motion to, I'm sorry. Motion to approve their request for appeal.
All right, any second?
Second.
And all in favor of granting an appeal to the city's decision in this, again, raise your right hand. All right, there are no votes for, so the measure fails five to zero. All right, our next agenda item is consideration and action regarding the approval of minutes for the February sixth, 2018 special meeting. Do you guys have a copy?
We have the nineteenth of December.
Does anyone have a copy of the minutes from that meeting? February sixth, 2018. Wait, I think I do have it here. Nope, this is December nineteenth.
That's what I've got.
I'll just summarize these for everyone. Meeting was called to order by myself at 7:01 PM. The people in attendance were, board members who were in attendance were myself, Ron Dyer, Glenn Mintz, David O'Brien, Linda Thornton, and Brian was the building official, Jim Hill was here, Aubrey Harbin and Becky Summers were here, Sorowitz and Grayban were absent. Mr. Dyer had some words about Mr. Kendrick, longtime board member here, who has recently passed away, to speak in his honor. I explained the procedure of the meeting. Then we conducted the public meeting, considered a request for encroachment of eighteen-hundred-and-thirty-seven square feet and some change of pavement into the required fifteen-foot landscape buffer on the interior side yard at 2210 South Friendswood Drive. Brian explained the application and explained that the plans had to be pretty much as they were or be turned down because of the, because of text dot. He explained why it had been denied. The architect, Brian Baca, gave us an explanation of why things needed to be as a request. We had a couple of public, people made public input. Mr. Campos had not seen the proposed site plan. I believe someone showed him that plan at the meeting. Mr. Tildur was an adjacent property owner, also spoke against the, the proposal. We heard from the designer, well, not the designer, but Marcus Reeves, who's a resident and, and a designer, although I don't think the designer on this building, also spoke and said that he thought that the, that all of the city, that the rule should apply to the same, unto all the city lots. There were some questions, several questions asked, the board delivered. Mr. Dyer made a motion to approve, was seconded by Mintz. It was passed four to one with Thornton opposing. And we approved the minutes of the December nineteenth meeting with a three-oh vote. Mr. Dyer and I abstained because we were not at the meeting. We had some comments from the board members with Mr. Hill about filling our board vacancies. And we were notified that there would be a meeting tonight, and then we, the meeting was adjourned. So you want to have any comment or problems with these minutes? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, so the minutes are approved, I've already signed them. And that's why we didn't have them, because I'd already signed them and given them to you. All right, then we'll move on. Item five on the agenda is comments from board members. Does anyone have any thing they, they want to say or any comments for city staff or liaison that might be here tonight? All right, then we'll move on. The, number six is the staff and council liaison reports. Our liaison, Mr. Hill, is here. Mr. Hill, do you have any instructions or comments for us?
Just have one comment. I thought it was real refreshing to see people who have been through so much willing to reinvest in Friendswood and build their houses at a level where hopefully it'll never happen again, but that is really encouraging.
You know, that's, I have a feeling there's going to be a lot of that happening. In fact, a couple of neighbors already mentioned it. That's something you might want to mention to council, that they might want to pass some kind of blanket rule about those so that we won't have to consider them.
Well, I don't know. He'd have to draw up some, or Mary Kay would, but no, I agree that when you raise them up like that, you got to be able to get into them. And so anyway, but it's, you know, we talk about nearing build-out in Friendswood, and I, I don't think it'll ever be built out. People will be rebuilding on these old lots because it's a beautiful town and it's a good town.
Well, I can tell you that on the, the road that I live on, they've torn down three or four, at least three houses, and started all over. So I'm in agreement there. It's not like they're going to run out of real estate, they're just going to start over.
Yeah, I've been hearing that we were close to build-out for about twenty-five years now, I think all of us have. All right. Anything else, Mr. Hill? Any other staff members have any input? All right, we hear a motion to adjourn then?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved, we are adjourned.